Not over till it's over. Ain't over till that lady sings. She's not even humming yet.
At this time, we will come back to order. Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Yeah.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brazel?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Shadowland?
Here.
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Yarborough?
Here.
And Mr. Chairman of the quorum.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the board agenda, we have three special guests with us today. We have Jenica, Jaylee, and Victoria, and they are here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So at this time, would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Jenica, Jaylee, and Victoria.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Lord's religious stands, one nation under God, in the visible, written, and just as all.
Way to go. You should have put the flag behind you so we could watch.
Mr. Mallett, would you like to introduce these ladies?
Yes, I would. This is Victoria, Victoria. This is Jaylee, and this is Jenica. These two live with us, me and Kim, for the last two years. I have full custody of these two girls. This one, I have half custody of. So at sixty-three, I didn't think I'd be doing this, but I'm doing it.
Unexpectedly turned out to be the greatest day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the executive committee meeting held on April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, which were previously provided. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions, I would like to entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
They're moved.
Aye.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing the opposition, the motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes of the board meeting held on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, which had previously been provided to you. Are there any questions about these minutes?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move to personnel actions requiring board approval. The board has in front of you a set of personnel action. Are there any questions about the personnel actions in front of you? Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions?
They're moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? The motion carries. We now have a rare opportunity this month to approve two nominations for the prestigious Boyd Professorship, which is the highest rank bestowed on a faculty member. I call on Provost Dr. Haney to present the first request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson and members of the board. As the chair noted, we are proposing today two Boyd Professorships, and the Boyd is, of course, as noted, the most distinguished and highest professorial rank awarded by the university and represents the very best of our faculty. Named in honor of former Presidents Thomas and David Boyd, it recognizes faculty who have made extraordinary contributions to the academy throughout the globe. Since established by the Board of Supervisors in nineteen fifty-three, only seventy-five of our faculty across all of LSU campuses have been named Boyd Professors. The process is strictly confidential, and in fact, the candidates do not even know they're being considered. It requires dozens of evaluations by scholars from around the world in the nominees given discipline, and President Alexander has reviewed the dossiers of both faculty members and has provided his approval of my presenting these two to you today. The first candidate I present is a professor and musician, renowned for being an exceptional pianist who deftly crosses over between classical and jazz music. To understand the skill required to excel in both, think of an athlete who plays both football and baseball and is at the top of their game in each of these sports equally. The path to a career as a classical pianist includes tens of thousands of hours of dedicated practice time to develop the finger dexterity and muscle memory to perform long and difficult compositions by memory. The path to a career as a jazz pianist takes no less dedicated time to develop the ability to play by ear, improvise, and acquire the listening skills to respond musically to those with whom you perform. It is exceedingly rare to master both sets. The faculty member has appeared as a soloist and served as a music arranger for more than thirty American orchestras, as well as orchestras in Canada, Russia, and China. This individual has performed both classical and jazz recitals throughout the world, including in France, Germany, Mexico, Brazil, and Costa Rica, culminating in a debut at the Wild Recital of Carnegie Hall in New York City. Nine commercial recordings document this faculty member's artistry and versatility. For a full-time faculty member to have ten performances in one year is remarkable, but for a faculty member to average ten performances a year over an eighteen-year period is simply phenomenal. This individual maintains the high level of creative activity all while also remaining fully engaged with teaching and mentoring here at LSU. And so, on behalf of President Alexander, it is with great enthusiasm that I will read the following resolution that I will ask you to approve, appointing the seventy-sixth Boyd Professor in LSU's history. Whereas, the Louisiana State University Boyd Professorship Review Committee has determined, in accordance with the provisions of Article Two, Section fourteen of the Board of Supervisors Regulations, that Willis Deloney, professor in the School of Music in the College of Music and Dramatic Arts at LSU, has attained national and international distinction for outstanding scholarly achievements and contributions in the field of keyboard and jazz studies. And whereas Professor Deloney, a world-class musician renowned for his exceptional keyboard skill in both classical and jazz idioms, performs at the highest levels as a soloist and music arranger for orchestras, as well as with notable jazz artists around the world. And whereas Professor Deloney, who has served twenty-one years as an active and engaged teacher of piano and jazz at LSU, mentoring doctor of musical arts students to degree completion, captivating prospective students with his talent and world recognition, has mentored students who have become professional musicians and educators throughout the world. And whereas Professor Deloney's recognized and awarded teaching and support of young musicians, including undergraduate and graduate students, has led to numerous outstanding distinctions and achievements, including the Tiger Athletic Foundation Award for Outstanding Teaching and the LSU Alumni Association Faculty Excellence Award. And whereas Professor Deloney's achievements and distinctions while out at LSU has both brought international acclaim to the university and made it a premier center of scholarship and creative endeavors in the field. And whereas the recommendation to confer upon Willis Deloney, the Virginia Martin Howard Professor of Keyboard Studies and Professor of Jazz Studies, LSU's most prestigious rank of Boyd Professor has been endorsed by the Executive Vice President and Provost of LSU and by the president, now therefore let it be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University and Agricultural Mechanical College that Willis Deloney is hereby designated as Boyd Professor effective May thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen. I submit this resolution for your approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to move that resolution and I'd like to say something after we do our vote.
Yes, sir.
I will second.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion unanimously passes.
Just briefly, Willis was a student in Zachary, at Zachary High School, a dear friend of the late principal up there, Jerry Boudreaux. Was one of the top students at that high school. My wife taught at the time that he was there, but he didn't, she didn't teach him, but he was really an outstanding young man at that age, and his dad was a cattle marketing specialist that I got to know extremely well, Charles Deloney, and I worked with him for years. And I think it's a great honor for the university and for Willis, and I'm proud to say that I know him very, very well, so I wish you were here to hear it, but...
What we do this is an interesting process, but yes, he is phenomenal, to be sure, and to read the letters from scholars around the world, really articulating the exceptional talent of somebody who can be the premier in both of those areas of both jazz and classical is just phenomenal.
Very good.
And he's ours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, sir, Mrs. Starnes.
Does Professor Deloney know?
He, because, in the, in the, back in the day, this was never informed until the formal vote, but because these are livestreamed and people tweet, we wanted to ensure that he did not get a Instagram post telling him, so he is aware that this, that you were voting and was absolutely speechless and thrilled, so he will be thrilled to know that it's official and the president will be informing him of that.
And unanimous.
And unanimous, absolutely.
I will be informing him as soon as this meeting ends.
And Dr. Haney, please present the next recommendation.
Yes, so the next candidate I will present is preeminent in the field of gravitational wave research. With consistent funding from the National Science Foundation for decades, this faculty member spearheads the Laser Interferometer Gravitational Wave Observatory, known as LIGO. Its mission is to detect gravitational waves from distant galaxies, and the challenge from here on Earth is that these faraway occurrences are exceptionally small and difficult to detect. Gravitational waves were first predicted by Albert Einstein in nineteen seventeen based on his theory of general relativity. While Einstein theorized their existence, he didn't actually believe we would ever have the instrumentation with sufficient sensitivity to actually measure them. Almost a century later, scientists were still unable to detect these ripples in the fabric of space and time, as he predicted. That was until September, two thousand and fifteen, when, from only a few miles from this very place, it was observed that two massive black holes merged some one point three billion years ago, producing the first ever gravitational waves to be detected on this planet. The LIGO Collaborative of over one thousand scholars elected this LSU faculty member to be the international spokesperson, a role that is, as one reviewer noted, the boss of the bosses for their work. And this faculty member became the face of this discovery that went on, of course, to win the twenty-seventeen Nobel Prize in Physics. This individual's significant scientific contributions to the collaborative, instrument development, and data analysis, no doubt, were critical to the discovery, and this faculty member's ongoing leadership role in the LIGO Collaborative is a clear reflection of the high regard with which colleagues around the globe have for this individual. This esteemed scholar spent years refining LIGO's capabilities and has demonstrated leadership skills that are now being employed to steer peers from theory into a whole new field of gravitational wave astronomy. I add my own voice to the chorus of this faculty member's colleagues, which includes two Nobel laureates, when I provided, when I provide my enthusiastic recommendation of physics and astronomy professor Gabriela Gonzalez to the Boyd Professorship. On behalf of President Alexander, I will now read the resolution to appoint the seventy-seventh Boyd Professor in LSU history. Whereas, the Louisiana State University Boyd Professorship Review Committee has determined, in accordance with the provisions of Article Two, Section fourteen of the Board of Supervisors Regulations, that Gabriela Gonzalez, professor in the Department of Physics and Astronomy in the College of Science at LSU, has attained national and international distinction for outstanding scholarly achievements and contributions to the discipline of astrophysics. And whereas Professor Gonzalez, one of the foremost international experts on gravitational waves and interferometric detectors, has provided pivotal leadership in research that led to the first gravitational wave detection in the world, confirming Einstein's theory of relativity, and has provided leadership as spokesperson for the Laser Interferometer Gravitational Wave Observatory, directly resulting in the award of a Nobel Prize to the LIGO founders. And whereas Professor Gonzalez has received more than twenty-six national and international accolades and awards, including her election to the National Academy of Sciences, the twenty-nineteen SEC Professor of the Year, the twenty-seventeen National Academy Award for Scientific Discovery, the Brigadier General Juan Batista Bustos Award, and the Geronimo Luis de Cabrera Distinction from the government of Cordoba, Argentina, among many others. And whereas Professor Gonzalez has also mentored several doctoral students and postdoctoral fellows who have gone on to become professors at prestigious universities and scientists in international laboratories. And whereas Professor Gonzalez's achievements while at LSU has brought international distinction to the university and made it a premier center of scholarship in the field, and whereas the recommendation to confer upon Gabriela Gonzalez, professor of physics, LSU's most prestigious rank of Boyd Professor, has been endorsed by the Executive Vice President and Provost and by the president, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University and Agricultural Mechanical College, that Gabriela Gonzalez is hereby designated as Boyd Professor effective May thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. I submit this resolution for your approval.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this Boyd Professorship.
They're moved.
Second.
We all moved.
Look, these bios really make you feel inadequate about yourself.
To be sure, and privileged to call them our colleagues, to be very sure.
It has been moved and properly seconded. At this time, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The motion unanimously passes.
I could just add, last night, we had the honor, Stacy and I had the honor of being down at the SEC Annual Meeting where Gabriela, Professor Gonzalez, got the sole, it is the sole SEC Professor of the Year award. Every school, fourteen schools, put up a professor, and only one gets that honor, and she received the honor, the second LSU professor to receive that honor that started in two thousand and four, and the only school to have two that have received that honor. But since the discovery in two thousand and seventeen of the gravitational wave at LIGO, our LIGO facility and our faculty and the team she recognized with students and faculty so well last night, has made sixteen other international discoveries that you can follow generally what's going on over there by listening to the BBC, British Broadcast System, because these are worldwide discoveries that are being credited to LSU's work just over in Livingston, Paris, under Gabriela Gonzalez, our physics faculty, and many of our students. So it's a remarkable feather in the cap for LSU to have such a high-achieving, internationally recognized operation in our physics department and our astrophysics faculty that are doing such an amazing job in getting the world to pay attention to what's happening right here at LSU.
That motion has carried. Dr. Haney, do you have another request?
No, actually. I can think of several if you'll give them.
Hard to follow that.
The document, the document they gave me says you have another request, so I just name on them.
I think we're good.
It's time for the staff advisor and faculty advisor, excuse me, reports. We'll start with Ms. Rachel Henry of the Staff Advisor. Congratulations on your new position.
Thank you. I'm technically not president until July, but I get to stand in for, we'll see then, but I get to stand in for President Tammy Milliken. She's not too terribly sad she's missing today as she prepares for her daughter's wedding this weekend.
Very nice.
May is a very exciting time on the LSU campuses, and while we celebrate every tiger that crossed the stage a few weeks ago, we are fiercely proud of the twenty-nine employees that earned degrees. This May, there were seven earning bachelor's degrees, two earning certificates, fourteen earning master's degree, and six earning a doctoral degree. President Milliken sent congratulatory letters to main campus staff graduates, and she received a note from one employee that I thought you might enjoy. She earned a bachelor's degree, and she mentioned how grateful she is for the investment that LSU made into her and how she looks forward to new opportunities afforded to her as she continues her career at LSU. LSU Council of Staff Advisors met yesterday and to share some news and updates from the various campuses. To echo the comments made earlier, staff at LSU-A are almost aggressively excited about having Dr. Paul Correll back on campus. They had very positive previous experiences, and they're very thankful for the two-year appointment as they look forward to him establishing stability during the interim. LSU-A recently held a very successful faculty and staff appreciation week with positive feedback. They also recently welcomed representatives from the main campus Accounts Payable Department, so Patrice Grémion and Jennifer Driggers conducted two three-hour workshops to discuss the various policies and procedures, which were very well attended and very well received. Lastly, they were very excited about Ricky Brazel joining the board and wanted to extend their own congratulations. LSU Ag Center is continuing their monthly wellness programs for employees to include emergency preparedness. Their four-H camps are underway, and they are gearing up for the four-H University, which will take place in Baton Rouge next month. Pennington Biomedical recently finished their scientific dinner series, with the April thirtieth dinner featuring two of their scientists discussing the various stages of diabetes. They are gearing up for their first employee giving campaign that will begin next week. LSU Health Sciences in New Orleans is in the process of conducting a performance management appraisal training, and for unclassified staff specifically, which is going really well. And on the LSU main campus, we continue to work with the various departments across campus on the implementation of various staff senate resolutions to include the protocol for the death of an employee, the representation on critical hiring committees, and lactation policies and resources. We were very excited to have a very high-record number of volunteers secured for the May commencement ceremonies to distribute waters and assist with golf carts, but unfortunately, Mother Nature had other plans. Through spring fundraisers, we raised an additional four hundred and eighty dollars for the fee support scholarship for staff, and we want to thank the LSU UREC for hosting the faculty-staff kickball tournament and wish those teams in the finals very good luck for next week. Lastly, we want to thank Dr. McMillan and Dr. Mandy Lopez for speaking at our May meeting, further demonstrating our strong partnership with faculty senate, and I look forward to continuing that next year. And the very last thing, as you all know, each LSU campus has incredible staff that work hard daily at good work worth doing, and we often don't have those stories shared with our top leaders. And so the council agreed yesterday to end each report sharing a very brief story of hard-working staff members for one of our campuses, and I'm especially proud to share the stories of Alex Dresen, Christine Westerling, which are assistant directors with Residential Life at LSU, as well as Michael Dorban, who's a coordinator with LSU Residential Life. Several months ago, under their leadership, the LSU Residential Hall Association Student Organization submitted and won the bid to host the National Association of College and University Residence Halls Conference. They have since worked tirelessly, and between yesterday and today have welcomed over two thousand college student leaders from across the country to our campus. Over the next few days, they will share, they will network, and they will grow together as the participants see best practices from our residential life. And while I am sure they will appreciate your positive thoughts over the next two days, I have no doubt that thanks to their hard work, collaborative efforts, and pure enthusiasm that Alex, Christine, and Michael have poured into not only this conference, but their student leaders, a successful conference is inevitable. but their student leaders, a successful conference is inevitable. So with that, our report is concluded.
Thank you very much. Dr. Ken McMillan, please give us the faculty advisor report.
Thank you very much, Chair, members of the board. It gets harder and harder for me to step up here behind everything that goes on before, so I'll preface my remarks by saying we have not only our two new Boyd professors, but many, many outstanding faculty here at LSU. So I guess I use the word implore each of you as a board supervisor, that when you have the opportunity, help Mr. Benchoff and our development staff, because we know that we can't depend only on the state or student tuition dollars to continue the excellence that we have here for our faculty and staff. And so in that regard, kind of keep Mr. Benchoff and the Foundation in mind whenever you possibly can in your contacts, because that's important to all of us in our success. One of the reasons I say that is that we have very good set of deans in most of our colleges, but we will be searching for three new deans this next fall, humanities and social sciences, humanity, human sciences and education, and the graduate school, and each of those three areas is very important to this continued success at LSU. What the faculty senate will be working on this summer, the executive committee are a new policy statement on academic free speech and tenure to supplement Permanent Memorandum 79 on freedom of speech and expression, so that we have all three of those areas covered. We'll also be revising our faculty senate constitution and bylaws, so that we bring those more in line with what we do. As Ms. Henry mentioned, I'll be stepping down as president on August 26th, and so Dr. Mandy Lopez, clinical sciences professor at the Vet School, will become the new faculty senate president. She has two major interests in reviving the college policy committees and in also looking more at salary equity, which we've kind of let go by the wayside for a year. And so those will be two of her major thrusts as the new faculty senate president. Last but not least, then, we also will have a change in council of faculty advisors by having the elections next month, and so you'll see a new face appear in the next couple of months. With that, I'll close my report, and thank you very much for the opportunity to give the report today.
Thank you very much. Dr. Alexander, would you please give us the president's report?
Yes, it's Mr. Chair. Thank you, and once again, thank faculty and staff for their hard work. I'd also like to thank our board members for all the graduations that many of you attended, and our show of strength up in Shreveport, and our commitment to Shreveport at the medical school graduation, which went exceedingly well, and we thank Chancellor Golly for the reception before, and the rest of the events that just made it a wonderful experience in a packed house in the Gold Dome, is it Gold Dome?
Gold Dome.
The Gold Dome.
Or, as the governor likes to say, the inside of a golf ball.
The inside the golf ball. The, in May, this, we predicted this month would set records for LSU, and we did. We set major records, six years straight, we've been record-breaking in our commencements and number of graduates that are graduating from our campuses. And I'd like to personally thank the staff for all they do and the faculty, because this would not happen. And we've had bad budget years during that period, and we haven't had what we would consider, we've had adequate, but we're still working on the good budget years, and we hope to get there with the current administration, and we, but we would not have the numbers and the graduation records and the many, many records that we achieved if it hadn't been for the daily work of our faculty and staff. So I'd like to thank them for these record-setting numbers. The fall looks very, very optimistic on the main campus. We have 10% more students with ACTs of 30 or higher. It's the largest freshman class and highest achieving freshman class, it appears to be, coming in-state and out-of-state. In addition to that, we've got potentially much higher admissions of freshmen going into LSU-A, which is about a 3.5% increase, and retention at LSU-E is improving and has improved significantly. So we look forward to reporting back to the board and the public at large about what we believe will be an enrollment record-breaking fall semester for LSU in terms of the number of students that we have on our various campuses. Special thanks or congratulations to three, not, we normally have two or one of these Goldwater Scholars, but we have three Goldwater Scholars. Jackson Green of Monroe, Katie Davis of Frisco, Texas, and Said Akbar Zamin of Baton Rouge, all one Goldwater Scholars. And third-year LSU student Jack Green of Lake Charles has been named the 2019 Udall Scholar, and he won the same scholarship, which is rare, last year. He was a Udall Scholar, making him the second LSU student ever to win the Udall, the Udall National Udall Scholarship, twice. Once again, LSU was named among America's Best College Values by Forbes Magazine, and the reason this is important, because they take cost and they take, they also take outcomes into account. It's one of the better rankings that I believe that are out there, because those factors are indeed factored in. The LSU Game Design Program ranked in the top 25 in the nation, and congratulations to Dr. Derek Rivera, our Vice Provost for Diversity. He has been named President of the American Association of Blacks in Higher Education for this coming year. A great honor, that we know he will do great things with that. The personnel side of things, we're certainly proud and look forward to having Dr. Nancy Sorenson to serve as our new LSU-UNIS chancellor, that she begins later this month, and we'll have her, she'll indeed take her seat in this June meeting. She's actually replacing Dr. William Bill Crowe, who has done an exceptional job just stepping in as interim chancellor. And Bill, you have been an outstanding leader with an outstanding career, and it has been an honor for you just to come across the Texas border, from one university town to another, from Austin, Texas to UNIS, Louisiana. To come and spend a year working with our students and picking up where Kim Russell left off, and we just, we appreciate your professionalism, we appreciate everything you've done at UNIS for so many people, and I think it's only fitting that the LSU-E softball team, which I hope nobody messes with, because won their sixth national championship, is a beautiful way for a send-off. I don't know, Bill, if you have any comments?
Well, I will have, first of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity, for all of you. LSU-E is a really special place, and I've enjoyed my time there. Actually, Nancy gets credit for the national championship. She was named the chancellor a week before that team won the championship, so it's, I have a cap for her and a little medal that they brought back, so it's really hers. But LSU-E, I believe, serves a special mission in the LSU family, and I think that mission is very important. And we feel like we get unusually strong support from you all and from Dr. Alexander, and we really appreciate that, because we do make a difference in the lives of our students, and so thank you for your support. I do live in Austin, Texas. I went to the University of Texas. I understand you all are traveling to Austin later on this fall, so if you want to come a day or two early and see some of the haunts in Austin, I would be more than happy to show you around, show you some of the, you know, we have gas stations here in Louisiana where the food is great, our gas stations in Texas are barbecue joints. And so I'd love to give you a tour of Austin, some of the local dives for barbecue, so, but thank you so much for the opportunity. It was a great honor and pleasure to serve. I'm very impressed with the LSU system in general, and particularly with the folks at LSU-E.
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add in your comments to thank Dr. Crowe for the incredible job you've done. The morale around the campus is just going beautifully. The, you led the campus in a way that most interims kind of worry about making change or implementing things, but to keep the enthusiasm going, to see the enrollment increasing, and the spirit of the campus, I've had the opportunity to be there several times this spring, as well as at graduation, which was a phenomenal event that was a packed house and a great enthusiastic graduation. So interims can be placeholders, and you certainly helped keep the momentum of that campus going, and what I'm very proud to call Louisiana Signature Junior College. You helped us really hold the ground and make good ground, so that Dr. Sorenson's coming into something that still has momentum going forward, and we just appreciate all the work and the service, and the service to your faculty and your students, because it is a unique place, and it's very special and very meaningful in the state of Louisiana. So I wanted to add my congratulations and thanks for all the good work you did.
Thank you, Chancellor Crowe, for everything that you've done. I'd also like to thank Chancellor Guiu Wong. Guiu is departing after two years from LSU-A, but I'd just like to commend his service to Alexandria and Sinla and throughout the region, and he was an outstanding leader there for two years, and he is moving on to Edinburgh. It used to be Edinburgh State University in Pennsylvania, but they, in Pennsylvania, for some reason, they dropped "state" out of their name a while ago. So it's Edinburgh University in western Pennsylvania, and we wish him the very best in his endeavors up in Pennsylvania. Along the line of LSU-A, I'd certainly like once again to welcome back Chancellor Paul Correll as interim chancellor of LSU of Alexandria. And he's served there for two years, and he'll serve another two years, and we look forward to seeing what we can do and the accomplishments that Chancellor, our Chancellor Correll will make there. And I shall thank John Rowan, the provost, for being there and working with the faculty, and we look forward to seeing great things coming from LSU-A in the coming years. Finally, we will have a number of fundraising events, sort of sub-kickoffs to the campaign on a number of our other campuses, in Alexandria, in UNIS, and in Shreveport in the fall, and it's just going to maintain the momentum that we have had, the momentum that we continue to have in setting records on fundraising. We're approaching nearly $750 million of our $1.5 billion campaign, almost halfway there already. And as a show of that, we found it quite interesting to experiment, and I commend the Foundation for putting this together, but we hope to duplicate this on our other campuses, but we had a day of giving last month. A day of giving, we had no idea what this day of giving, 24 hours of giving, by encouraging, using the internet, didn't cost much by simply using social media, and we were hoping to actually generate 1,860 donations from that 24 hours of giving. We had no idea how much money would be raised, generally on small gifts and small gifts adding up to do some matching gifts, but I'm pleased to say it was an amazing success, and I'd like to thank the Foundation. At the end of the day, we had over 2,700 gifts to the university, and those came to us from London to Honolulu, Hawaii, and 2,700 gifts to programs all over the university, programs all over our system, and generating nearly $900,000 in one day in 24 hours of small gifts to the university. Faculty, staff, I'd like to thank Robert Dampf for challenging our board, and our board jumped in wholeheartedly, and the board was involved. We had faculty, staff, alumni, friends involved, and it really shows how important LSU can be if we give them an opportunity to give back to LSU, and to give back to so many wonderful options, from the College of Business to the Honors College. And certainly thank Roger Ogden for making some major matching gifts when certain areas hit thresholds that triggered those major matching gifts. So I'd like to thank everybody for their work, but the Foundation for a great experiment that we hope to see happening every year from now on, and that we hope to duplicate on all of our campuses in the coming fall and the coming spring. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next, we have two reports that require board approval to accept, the revised FY2019 Audit Plan and the Third Quarter Informational Report. These reports have been previously provided to you for your review and consideration. Does anyone have any questions about either of these reports?
Move approval?
Second.
If it's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. At this time, I will entertain one motion to approve all committee actions that were recommended today.
Second.
Having been moved and properly seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the chairman's report. Just a few items. First, I want to congratulate and welcome our newest board member, Ricky, they do call you Ricky. Ricky Brazel, Ricky Brazel. We look forward to, we have enjoyed working with each of your predecessors, and we hear great things about you. You have a fantastic reputation, and we are all very excited to work alongside you and to have you represent the voice of all of the students, which is the most important voice in our system. So welcome. Also want to say, there were several of the board members who attended the graduations around the system. Always a very enriching, very exciting experience. We probably set a record for board members in attendance at the LSU Health Sciences Center Shreveport graduation. We would have had even more had everybody known what a spread Dr. Golly was going to put on at his house. We had a wonderful time fellowshipping at your, with you, Dr. Golly, thank you for doing that, and thank you for putting on a fantastic, fantastic day and a graduation day. I hated to miss the Health Sciences New Orleans. I loved that one very much, but I had to miss it, but our fellow supervisor Jimmy Woods conferred degrees there. I also attended the law school graduation, which was very nostalgic for me and the main campus as well. So it was a very exciting spring and very rewarding. I don't know how many of you knew or read about Otis Washington, but I would like to say Otis Washington was a legendary coach in New Orleans. Coached St. Augustine High School from 1969 to 1979, and in his 10 years as a high school football coach in New Orleans, he won seven district titles and three state championships, which was unprecedented. He's also the head coach at Southern University here in Baton Rouge for six seasons, I believe, and had great success at Southern. You may be wondering, well, why are you bringing up a coach who coached in high school and at Southern? Well, that's because, many of you may know that Otis Washington was the first African-American to coach football at LSU. He was an assistant coach hired under Coach Rain, who died in the plane crash in 1979, was kept on the staff by Coach Jerry Stovall in 1980, and coached the offensive line. So Otis Washington broke the color barrier at LSU by becoming the first African-American to be on the football coaching staff, and that was in the year 1979. Hard to believe, it didn't happen until 1979, but we are, we do, I do want to pause to honor the memory of Otis Washington, who was a legendary Louisiana coach, but who also meant a lot and was very historic to the LSU football program that we all love so much. His funeral is tomorrow, and I will be asking the board at a subsequent meeting to pass a resolution that we can provide to his family. The family reached out to me last week and talked about how much he loved LSU, although Coach Washington was known more for what he did in high school. He loved, according to his family, he loved LSU very much, and I want to provide something from the board in the way of a resolution to his family to honor him. With that, our next meeting is on June 28, 2019, in Baton Rouge. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
All right. Any objections? You adjourn.